Guys, got the tools there, right? And you just select and you go to the hyperlinks every morning. And that goes for about eighty percent of the website. Other areas are a little bit more, you will need more training, which rather than we do, give you. We normally provide two hours, but since we need to make a trip, they'll basically handle all the, you know, the whole day for you guys. If that's what it entails. On this particular project, we intend also to do photography, professional photography. We will come in for two days, especially, you know, right now that it's green. We will pay for photography. You need a lot of good photography. The photos that we have there are done, were done by a professional from here from Forestville. The name is on the photos. Like that one, like the big peanut that was done by somebody from there. Really good photography. But we will come ourselves. And all the photography that is required will spend two days here. And we can use that photography either for the website or for any of the other documents that we need, which I know that there's some interest on the brochures and magazines as well. Any questions?
Is this a hack group?
I'm sorry?
It's a hack group? Can people hack it?
Yes. That's why we add protection. We do, we use a system called Securi that if in case it's ever hacked, and it's happened already once, the system will shut down. It'll send us an email. Something's, it's going on, we can't tell what it is, but the best thing is for us just to go off the air. We go in there, we have, through this particular service, in thirty minutes, they can clean it up, do whatever it needs to do, and then we're up again. Another thing that I didn't have, that I did not mention, we have daily backups, weekly backups, and monthly backups. So if anything were to happen, we can always go a day before to bring it up. All that is included into that price. Yes, but everything is hackable.
Other question is, is it bilingual?
Bilingual, no, sir. It's only English. We do have the option to do so, but it's not at a real different price.
Because the reason I'm saying this, this community has a lot of Hispanic people, you want to put some advertising for like trash pickup, or something, you know, that maybe they want to read about it, you know?
Yeah, there's two ways of doing it. One of them, you're familiar with, obviously because of the question you asked me, there's a quick way of doing that, which we use, but it's a Google translation on the fly. Okay? That, you know, if you've ever done those translations, sometimes they don't work. Sometimes they may not be saying what you want to say. So, we can have that at an extra cost, which we can build it in, or do the translation, which is a manual translation, professional media, and which we add an identical copy to that, but that is extra, which is not a micro policy. Yes, sir?
Instead, you have to adjust your system. Have, have they had powder full time administration?
No. As a matter of fact, none of my clients have, they don't have an in-house. The city of Forestville, rather, the city of Fair, the city secretary is the one that does that. They don't have, no IT person. They have an IT person when something goes down, and when she comes down, they come from somewhere else and they fix that, not to this. And that's the advantage, and that's still, also, you don't have, you don't need to have an IT person in here.
Yeah, but does it take you full-time staff person to do the administration?
No, the administration is done by us. Of course, it works better if there's somebody in here, because there's, there has to be a connection between Forestville and that website. We're almost a hundred and fifty miles away. So there always has to be a connection in-house. Nothing will happen on its own.
So what kind of work does the in-house person do?
Okay, it can be divided as a team, can be done by the city manager, by the city clerk, the mayor, anybody can, you know, can be said, okay, we are gonna, we're gonna have this team of five people that are gonna suggest work on the, on the website, or send it just to Joe Garcia, which is me. And that's included in our price. But those updates can either be done, as I mentioned, or they can be done by training that we can train you, because most people want that anyway. Most, most, you know, most of our clients will wanna, I wanna have control, I wanna go in there, if I have an idea, I just want to post it. You have that ability to do so.
What is the size of your staff?
We're, we're three in the production. We have two salespeople, but I do have two technicians, one in Austin and one in LA, that we always have, you know, on-call. And this is all we do. And I know that we get, well, we've got a person who works at this full district, and he can come and work it. Well, that's a freelancer right there. And we'll only do it between the time he leaves office, I mean, his work, and we do this, we do this artwork. Any call that we do, we answer. Every website has, it's not in this one, but I have in the others, where you can submit a ticket, you know, for a request, rather, or you just need to log in, it has a support ticket, anybody can do it, and within minutes, you're gonna get a response from one or four people.
How many cities do you manage?
Cities, we have, City of Petula for the Chamber and the, and the county, City of Fair for the municipality, City of Alforias, the city, the Chamber of Commerce for Zapata, and the museum for Zapata.
Jim Hong?
Jim Hong.
And how long?
Three, five years.
Do they all look identical?
Well, no, identical not, but there's a certain framework that we have to keep, especially because it has to be flexible toward this. Okay, so we have a left and a right for most things, and one, because that flexibility that we need to keep for this. We're now deciding more primarily for this, because of what we found out. Sixty percent of the search, all the searches will be done by this, not by the city. So, yes, we could be perfect here for those, that forty percent, but now you're gonna have to hear from here. And that's how we put our attention to it. Many needs to work primarily more on this and the others.
Are you here to speak about the comps?
Well, I've, um...
You know, so Matt, you asked, you know, the...
We haven't, I just received this notice myself, so I haven't had a chance to review it, but, and I wanted to have an opportunity to review as well. I'm gonna make any comments and remarks to that. We've been checking with the interim controller, making sure that all five or six points have come out, and the attorney as well, that is what we can cover, and how much we would like to cover with the taxes, the hotel motel tax reference to that. And then, of course, EDC has to make the decision as well, so I don't know, we don't really talk about comps at this point.
Joe, I got the announcements, you know, like the Thomas announcement about the translation with the image expansion, like, we're gonna have a major cleanup. If you want to put that in, we should meet in the dispatch room.
Okay, if it's not that manual work, every story or every article needs to be, needs to be translated.
Are you talking about, like, in the announcements, when you had, when you had down here, that a lot of things that were having base news, you can do that?
Well, to a certain extent, yes. What you can change, or what you can put in, you can put damage in that category, so which, but these letters, you see in the search, and you see there's anything that's with a background, that needs to be changed in the background. And that has a, there's a certain, there's a certain preparation that we need to do for that to appear. If we were to go with, with the first version, that's, you know, satisfied, or you're...
This is okay, so it's not something that we can do, or we still want to do that.
No, if it's included in Spanish, it will appear in Spanish. Yes. Yeah, like that story, I could have written it in Spanish, and say, there's period in English, of course, we can do that, but it will not appear in English. We can have another story in English to the single. Yes.
Are any of your clients profitable?
Profitable.
You've mentioned use of the hotel motel tax, and you've also mentioned that you're gonna have advertising. When will the city see profitability, or maybe quit using? Who's gonna get, who's gonna benefit at the end of your advertising?
Well, if you're selling, okay, good question. I have here the hotels. If we were to accept the plan as some suggestion, they're already paying for this website, because by, there's a, what, there's a certain condition, and I have it here. This is the hotel motel tax rules. And the one that I've underlined, it says that the hotel motel, the tax wherever is, it's incurred from the hotels, needs to be applied to this, you need to. It says, "Pay for advertising, solicitation, promotion, and attraction delegates to the city of the vicinity. Such expenditures are traditionally in the form of internet, newspaper, mail, television, or radio ads, or solicitations to promote an event of a facility." My simple rule has always been, if the hotel motel is gonna pay for it, I should be calling it, "Does it provide or does it make heads on beds, do they spend the night in this particular place?" If it does, that's what we want right there.
However, what else, Joe, they should be, like, I mean, you, you obviously can sell the, you know, spots on the page?
Yes.
For, for advertisement.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we, we have to turn those clients, for those cities that have this mentioned, have they sold anything? No, because the Chamber of Commerce already has membership. They don't need this particular income. The city of Fair, what we suggested, is exactly the same plan, and we have a few, but I don't know if they ever collected, because we don't go in there and charge for that. They sell it themselves, and whatever arrangement they've got, that's what goes. All we get is, we need to have it should be on the front page. And that's the inclusive instruction.
But I'm not saying that it's not possi, that it's not possible to accrue some type of revenue from...
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, this...
Because there's some people that, that don't, that are not registered through the Chamber of Commerce?
Right.
But, and would probably choose not to, but, you know, they probably would, you know, wanna put an advertising in there.
Right, which is a very good question. So this, this particular hotels, if there were not hotels, this particular component allows you to charge, allows you to bill, charge from paytown, and have revenue goes directly to you. If you want that function, that's already implemented where we're using the hotels. We can substitute that for hotels or anything else. The reason I said hotels, because most every website that we've done that is paid to the hotel motel, where we park the hotels, and so that's what I do. And if you click on it, and we can hear information that we can see that, either wanna register to there, we can also embed information and go extra, because that's, that's what we need to do, right? Yes, sir?
I'm, I'm confused.
Okay, ask me.
Because the cities who are paying to have this, but hotel motel is gonna be also paid for that?
Well, there's certain rules and regulations that I may not know, but I know that the money that's accrued from the, from the taxes that is collected from the hotels, from the state, those amounts can be earmarked for this kind of promotion. That is what pays, whether the, that check comes from the city, that money eventually, or from, at one point came from the coffers, from the, from the state. And that's what paid for this. This is what makes it legal, in other words.
What we anticipate is, is a combination of funds, so some will be from hotel motel tax, some will be from city advertising, because of the multimedia that we'll be using, but it is legitimate use for us to use the hotel motel tax for this type of media, as well as the print media as well. So we're hoping to be able to have an active thing, along with making our tour, business and tourist bureau, an active component, as we're trying to get that started as well.
One final thing, and I can say, we're an advertising agency primarily, we do marketing first. All these elements are part of the services that we provide as an advertising agency, maybe print, brochures, television, radio, all those are the things we handle. Internet is one of those. So, with the expertise that we have through marketing to small communities, which we have plenty of years, and you can check us out, graffiti.com, they will give you pages and pages of that. And that is the experience that we bring into trying to market a small community, because that's what we've done. And we have experience in doing this.
My last question?
Yes, sir.
Does that go put Wilson County out of the picture?
I'm sorry?
Does that go put Wilson County news out of the picture?
Well, um...
Is that, is that news?
No, no, this is...
But it's still, it's still going with the newspapers, doing advertising?
It's advertising, and I don't think we can put Wilson County out. We don't want to, we wanna partner with them, but what we wanna be able to do is get our news out, to get our story out, and so people can come to our website and click on to different things, and then Wilson County wants that corner, we'd be more than happy to sell them that corner, so that you can click on that corner and go to the Wilson County news. But because we can use Wilson County as a model news, as they advertise, people are driven to that site, we wanna drive people to our site.
Which is a good question. I can answer what City of Fair is doing there, they're directly linked to their, to the newspaper.
And I guess what I'm trying to say is, if, if that's the case, do, do we still have to subscribe to Wilson County like we normally do, or we just, we can get it for free?
Mr. Olmos is improving the current city's website, the city of Florida website.
Yeah, I understand.
It's all good. So, when you, when you go to our website now, it'd just be a little bit more user-friendly, and like you mentioning, we're also gonna be promoting hotels, which is related to hotel motel tax. That's the only reason we're promoting the hotels, but we're not gonna be on there, you know, promoting, you know, like a Janmont motor. We're not gonna be promoting Janmont motors nine ninety-five, that's not what we're doing. It's not an advertising venue. It's promoting the city of Florida, so when you Google Florida, Texas, and this website comes up, it's easy for you to navigate. If you wanna stay at a hotel, I'll tell you where to stay. If you wanna know events in Florida, you wanna know, but if there's no city government, if you think about moving here, if you think about parks, you know, what do the parks look like? That's all we're doing, is just promoting the city of Florida and improving our current website. So we're not getting into the advertising venue, or looking at selling newspapers or anything like that, and that's entirely different. Two different perspectives. Thank you, Mr. Olmos.
Thank you very much.
It's all right.
Number two scenes, four topics. Last night, we met with Tony Zomi, and one of the things that's happening, I don't know if it was about it, but Riverbend, the tip has actually been brought back to life. They will be presenting, I believe, that I made eighteen, something, I made eighteen, bringing to have members on their board. We asked Mr. Baker and EDC have agreed to allow him to participate in this board, as well as two of the members that are on that board we did. We have someone who's going to be putting together approximately sixty phones to get started and make some decisions, but I'm gonna do the comment, the video to you, to ask you, to answer the questions that you may have, and reference to what's going on, the planning, just all those kind of questions to do so. One of the things that the developer is asking, is for the developer to agree with. What this is going to do is to negotiate the fund, so that we can ask for the funds upfront, out of this engineering consultant and the WBS, so that the city is gonna have to pay it upfront, and then in turn, get reversed. Because if the project goes upside down south again, we step on all those legal engineering consultants, people. I had a preliminary meeting with Chris Hug, Chris Hug from the Rosenburg's office, Chris Stewart, the consultant that did our maintenance plan, myself, staff, Ms. Niko, to talk about how we're going to negotiate that. One of the things that our chamber committee is having, a workshop, to talk about the funding, the fees, and what they're gonna do with planning, development, they call it the HUD, PBD, to talk about a master plan, because this chain is a little bit, since they did some of those, it's a little dense in some areas, with lots of, lots smaller, larger than other fakers, so we want to be able to do that and have that deal discussion. Planning and zoning will be the host fakers meeting, I believe, this on, and Wednesday, it is a Sunday, and this time?
They were asking, I believe, some people tried to, because we need to have Chris Stewart here, and we need to have the man with the river bend, so they were gonna try for the third year, if, if you can make it, the council could be there, because it's a workshop for everybody. So we need to, that's what the purpose of this is, to get it taken.
The third year, no, like April. We will be hosting it as a workshop for planning and zoning, so that if there's not a form from the council, we still can have that discussion. But we want to invite you early on to have a discussion. We will come to it to a mayor's eighth meeting, but we want you to be able to participate in that, and I wanted to let you know of that meeting on, it's a workshop meeting scheduled for six o'clock, the third day, which is the fourth day. As you prepare for those information together, those packets we can send to you electronically, as well as we can pick one outside of the Forest office, the secretary's office and administrators who can use on your computer. The FELTS risk structure is a meeting that FELTS is requesting with the city to have a workshop meeting, and that date is...
Fourteenth?
Wednesday, May fourteenth. They're requesting for you to be at this meeting, we need to have a form for us to discuss the risk schedule, that is their request, I believe, in time of six o'clock?
Right, what does you say?
Is what they're asking of us. They're trying to confirm this meeting. It's a meeting that they need to have to talk about their script, their schedule, they're required, because we are, our owner, and they're required to have a meeting, so we wanted to see if that date was okay for you, and the interim secretary can confirm that meeting. It's right before our meeting, it's, it's our off week.
Fourteenth is an off week, but...
It's our off week, the week, the week off week.
So Wednesday also?
Yes, sir.
Do Wednesday also? I didn't want to do it the same day as the meeting, a council meeting, but she can. Now, the FELTS one, she probably could do it, if you wanted to come be here on the five o'clock, or, you know, and then...
It's just a little tight sometimes.
Too long, but not, that's why I was, she gave you the fourteenth and the fifteenth.
Fourteenth would probably be better, for me.
The fourteenth, is that the month? Yeah, so we were hoping to, because it's the off week, so it's not the February, you know, we need, but we can have that kind of schedule, but we wanted to be able to just, the meeting could be as long as two hours, so we wanted to, not necessarily bring a problem. Could be as long as two hours. We don't want to put it in front of the council meeting.
Jump up, May fourteen.
May fourteen.
May fourteen, oh, okay.
Yeah, but that is a regular council meeting.
No, May fourteen? No, the Wednesday.
The, the first one on Thursday.
We have a council meeting on the eighth and the twenty-second, in May.
I'll have to get that with you on my schedule from that. On the, the fourteenth or fifteenth?
Mm-hmm. I was looking at that Wednesday.
So you can alert the interim secretary when I know of your ability, because we do have to have a form at meetings, FELTS. We don't have to have it for the planning and zoning, it is a workshop, it is their meeting, but we do have to have a form on FELTS, FELTS.
You might suggest on the one to be, I'd like to notice it anyway. In the case, in the council number, it'll be complicated.
Well, we're gonna post it in, because we're, we're asking everybody to be there, so I'm gonna post it like a regular meeting.
Then what are you saying?
Yes, and we can, you know, that the meeting has been confirmed for either the fourteenth or fifteenth of May. Just one last part, that May eighth, then we will make a presentation on Riverbend, as well as...
Is that six o'clock, the Riverbend?
Yes, Monday is the six o'clock. There is going to be a party to present the developer review and just about review, and then we'll be asking each of the people to their board.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to item two, B, citywide cleanup Saturday, April nineteenth.
Yes, in your package, you see this wonderful green sheet, we're trying to clean up the city of Forestville, in the midst of all the wonderful things that we started, and I actually have to say that the mayor has really been pushing for this, and I have to thank her for reminding me of that. We went to a TML, I think it was last month, and they have a neighborhood cleanup. As part of the contract for Republic, they provide for us a bulk pickup date, and we have scheduled three of them, April nineteenth, July twelfth, and April fourth. On the nineteenth, because the spring is actually right after Good Friday, we won't have like a spring cleanup, it may be a little bit different than what we've done before. Historically, we've opened up the Saturday dump, we have more activity to advertise to people, bring their stuff, we have more dumpsters there for people to put them in, and we're done eighth and twelve. But this year, we're gonna try something a little bit differently. The mayor has contacted some volunteers from a local church, ex, extort notice, staff will be working, some on overtime, some volunteering for comp time, and we're also working with people who need community service to come out, and not only to accept bulk pickup at the location of our dump, but also to drive around in teams and pick up things curb site. So we're, we're getting out notices and having some of these wonderful green flyers out to let people know they can call city, to give us the right address. We're gonna clean up some problem areas for some complaints, we've identified six locations to reference to do that. So we're asking volunteers to come here, and we're gonna meet team of local staff volunteers, and also some people that are community service, even a youth group has volunteered to say they will come and clean up. We're gonna do a citywide cleanup, and we're hoping that we can be successful on the nineteenth. The mayor has contacted our local commissioner, our county commissioner has agreed to accept tires, which we don't normally accept at our dump, but we're going to accept tires, pick up tires, and take them to the county yard and put them in a trailer, they have provided for the city. So we're really excited, it's gonna be a joint effort, to come out and see, after everybody's gonna be off on that Friday, to see what we can do, and hopefully we can do it again in July and October, as we learned that this was something that was presented at TML as a community effort of volunteerism, to help, we wanna help people clean up, we don't wanna just actually find people, we have a problem, and there's some vacant in the bank in homes we need to address, so we're hoping that a team effort can help us take there some of those things. We also have some of those advertisements here, we're having them lobbying, and we're going to definitely give it to Wilson County News, so they can put it out there as well, that we want people to know about the cleanup that we're having here. We're asking them to put it on our website as well. Not the new approved ones, but the one we have now, we don't work with yet, but, yeah.
So, like all brush and everything like that?
Brush, furniture...
But it has to be taken to them, like, I've noticed, you know, some of the places, or some already have, like, huge amounts of, of the, of brush off of, on their furniture, of their house or whatever, that won't be picked up, or, it will be...
It will be picked up. We're gonna, we need this up this time, and this is the first time we've ever done anything like that, is to go curb. I know that the former Lewis Holler did a curb site pickup, but it didn't, it wasn't necessarily our bulk pickup. So this bulk pickup, we're gonna drive around and pick up some things and identify, so I, some of the things are already out there to curb now, they're just gonna sit there, not being picked up. So we're gonna go and do a little spring cleaning for the city of Forestville, hopefully we can catch some momentum and do it again in July, so that we can get people used to come and do that. So we are senior, or someone who doesn't have a truck to get it to the dump, and the dump right now is popular, it fills up very quickly. Councilman Olmos, he's not here tonight, said to me, he, he got there one day at nine o'clock, and the dump was already filled, because it is deep, which is great for us to have this program. So definitely, when we're having bulk pickup, we wanna be able to provide a service for those who can get it in their trucks and get it there, but also for those who cannot, they just get it to the curb. I do wanna emphasize, this is for residential, not for commercial, this is for residential, not for someone who's remodeling their home or taking down a fence, a set of, they need to take away. This is for residential use.
Now, this city does have a, like a chipper to put all this brush through with the truck, right? Or, or they don't help work?
They actually burn that, but Republic will be here on site for this day to help us with any masses that we have. They don't take tires, but the mayor has made that arrangement, and we do have an issue with some tires. And we're also asking for volunteers, so even electric officials can show up and come and help us to do the brush. It'd be a good photo op for our new website. We are gonna be sending out a mass email also to some of our people on commission as well to come and volunteer. We're just asking for you to come out and trip in, and we'll see, I'll be here. I got some gloves too, so we have gloves. Wonderful vest, so in case you want, we can put you with bottled water, gloves in the vest, and then thank you. So we're hoping that we can be successful in, in to get behind the spring cleaning. It's important to the mayor, it's important to me as well, and I know it's important for the community as we get ready for all these wonderful law flaws, and we'll be joining and following those deals.
Mr. Dickinson, to hear, I'm gonna ask you something. I have some agencies that are willing to do, like, handicap ramps or help, like, in the seniors, and I know that your nurses go out, if they see that there's a necessity that, that feels that a family needs, if you can give me their name and their address, of course, we have to get their permission for us to, there's kids that are willing to go out there and paint their house, and I've got some little donate the paint and stuff, so... and I've got some that will donate the paint and stuff, so I know that there's a lot out there, but we can't cover, we did it the first time around, but it can be an ongoing project for, like, some of these church groups that are willing to do it?
We'd love to do that.
So you could let me know?
Um, our hospice is always in need of volunteers, uh, as a matter of fact, and those kinds of things are things that one of the female, older female volunteers can't do.
Right.
So that, that would be a terrific thing.
And assistance to that, so you could let us know?
We'll do that.
Maybe we could, could be another home health agency in town, if that's true?
I'm sorry?
Is there other home health agencies?
Uh, Calumay Memorial is a home health, um, that's, those are the other two in Floresville.
We could let the county know and descend, and then we can try to work together.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go on to the business. Three A, consideration and action to abduct an eight liner ordinance, Chief Ewer.
Good evening, mayor and council audience. Uh, our discussion will be for the eight liner ordinance, uh, currently the city does not have a, uh, eight liner ordinance in place. Uh, we have had many, many individuals come into the office, uh, I would have to say within the last few months, four months at least, I've had about four or five individuals coming in and, and were inquiring about the, uh, an ordinance or how we regulate, uh, the eight liners, and of course, like I said, currently we don't have anything. And my explanation to them, what I tell them is as long as they don't, uh, pay in cash, which it becomes illegal. What they do now currently, in my understanding, is they either give coupons or, uh, gift cards from either Walmart or H U V. Uh, I haven't confirmed that, but, uh, uh, that is how they, they are currently paying. I think, my personal opinion on the eight liners, it would be a great incentive for the city and take care of a lot of our necessities that the city is in need of, uh, of course, you know, in, in front of you, I should have some packages, or a packet, uh, of this ordinance, that I believe Mr. Lou Rosenberg drafted up, been several years ago, if they're correct, Mr. Lou Rosenberg?
Yes, sir.
Don't know if that's to the date, but, uh, no, that's as well, but, uh, probably in the past, but, uh, I don't have an idea, uh...
I thought I understood was that, um, Chief Maginus was the one who started it, and they, uh, could be right below the stuff and then die. They never came back.
They didn't come back to the side of the meeting.
Yeah, they never came back to the side of the meeting, anything.
Is it illegal for, for gift cards?
To my understanding, it's not, as long as they don't pay out, uh, of course, cash money, uh, then it becomes illegal, or, uh, ten times the amount of the, uh, the dollar amount that is being paid into the machine.
These individuals that you're, that you're talking about, that have come to you, are these individuals that are already in town and they want to set up, or these new people coming in?
New people, uh, wanted to open up a business, you know, eight liner business, uh, I've had, uh... One, one Hispanic lady came from, uh, I believe out of Sposa County, and the reason for that, she says, the Polteak and, uh, I believe Pleasantson had, like, several machines, and there's this guy over there that apparently he's, he, he owns all four or five, uh, businesses, and is paying out the big money, but she couldn't afford it, so that's why she's looking somewhere else to, to establish her business. Uh, I've had, like, uh...
Do they have locations already scoped out as far as where they want to set them up?
One particular one was right near the corner of A, one individual told me he was looking at the house on A and one eighty-one, which I don't know if it was up for rent or, or what his deal was, but it, it was a house that he wanted to turn it into that. Uh, the old ones, of course, they normally get, like, buildings and, the old ones, uh, right there next to, uh, the old Walmart, the vacant spaces that were there, he was inquiring about that building, and, of course, I haven't heard anything after their inquiry on these things, but, uh, uh, like I said, it's, it's something, uh, we should consider, because, you know, it's, it's a revenue source and, you know, why not regulate it, you know, other cities surrounding areas, you know, front floors are, are doing that, you know, so...
Who, who would do, who would do the, or who would you suggest do the regulating of, of, of these, uh, areas?
Once, once they establish a business, uh, I guess Cindy would, would take care of it, or myself, uh, we would do an, uh, inventory of the machines, of course, because we're going to, you know, charge per machine, or, or however the ordinance is read, uh...
So it, so it would be a joint effort between the, the city co-compliance, as well as the police department, police department?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you, you personally don't have any problems with, uh, time or, you know, to follow up that, that?
No, that could be done during business hours during the day, as far as the initial, uh, inspection and stuff, and then thereafter, I think it'll be every year, uh, no, that wouldn't be an issue or a problem for the department.
Who's our, who's our co-compliance right now, officer?
Right now, we don't have a co-compliance officer, but, uh, we are advertised for that position and renew for that position. It would be a joint between co-compliance, because in the ordinance, it's written for an annual fee, so every year, they will need to sign up, and I believe it's written for the, January one, to renew, so it would be an annual license that they would have to do. It would also have to be in a commercial area, we would not allow that to happen in a residential zoned area.
So if there's any questions within that year, we don't have to renew it the next year?
Correct, and actually, they can lose their license sitting.
What, what I, what, uh, what I've read, you know, is just that they have to be stamped, they have to be sealed, they have to be, you know, each one has to be documented, serial numbers and so forth of each of the machines of, of every eight liner. Um, it was to say that some of these people wouldn't, you know, bring in another four after their inspection, and then, you know, take them out right before their other inspection is due, you know?
Right.
I, I believe that if, if we're going to, if we're going to have an ordinance, that it has to be, you know, just like, just like somebody with, with tall grass, tall weeds, you know, it has to be followed up on, you know?
Right, and that doesn't mean we can do random inspection, we can go in there like, every month, every two months, and do a random inspection, make sure they're compliant, but the initial inspection will be done yearly, you know, if they increase the number of machines, well, then they have to, of course, uh, go with the legend here, and comply with, with whatever the dollar amount is.
Do we currently have any businesses that have eight liners?
Uh, one, of course, is across from churches, and then the second would be Jase, Jase, uh, not Jase, uh, Jetstar. They have, like, I believe, five, six, seven machines, I'm not sure.
Chief, is that a convenience store?
Mm-hmm. Right across from Jacy Burger.
So then all of that ordinance affect them as far as, do they have to pay a permit now?
Yes, they would, they would give, I think the ordinance reads, uh, we would give them, like, thirty days for them to become compliant, and then...
So they wouldn't be grandfathered or anything?
No.
So it says that all, or maybe sold to me, are you saying, like, all of them, or is there any consumers, I'm assuming?
Consumed, uh, because that's a convenience store, so, you know, you could sell it, but not consume it.
Going back to Jetstar, from what I read, that they have to be at least two city blocks, or many church, school, well, if they got some at Jetstar, there's a church right next to them.
Right.
So they wouldn't be compliant.
Exactly.
So why are they, they're moving this order?
Well, well, there's not, currently, there's not an ordinance that regulates it, but...
We can, we can say that it's two blocks, so, you know, two blocks can be the size of, of this block, or can be the size of, of, uh, you know, another ordinance, you know, of not of equal size, and, you know, so I, I believe if, if we're going to have to, you know, if we're going to say two, two blocks, I think we should have a, a footage, you know, to, to be specific, because, I mean, that's a final line to, or say, a loophole to say, you know, that I'm, I'm within two blocks, or how are you going to tell me that I'm within or out of two blocks, you know?
Well, we can change that to be feet, you can say it can be, you know, no less than a hundred and fifty feet from the door, probably not, you can establish those kinds of things in reference to the ordinance, that's what we want to be able to do. And I know that the attorney had some definite things that he sent down, uh, that we wanted to definitely address, and that could be one that we can add to address, to say how far the distance within the city blocks, because city blocks may be a little bit dangerous, because the city block is different than the block that you want.
That's right.
And have you had any, uh, knowledge of any problems with any cities that have these eight liners?
No, uh, our last issues and problems with eight liners was, what was it, two thousand nine, I believe, when we had, uh, I guess, two different businesses here locally on the corner of one eighty-one and C Street that were paying out cash, and of course, they reported to, to us, and we sent in a couple of C I's and found out that they were definitely paying out cash, so of course, we seized the machines and all cash in the building.
And my understanding, when we seize them, we can't do anything other than send them, send them out of state and sell them.
We have this, this vent, uh, salesperson that we go to and, uh, beginning of May, but he, he, he sold it for us. I think there were like sixty-three machines that he sold at that time.
But you can't get, you know, basically, or anything for it, correct?
In two thousand, if, if I stand correct on the year, in two thousand nine, we did, we have, like, almost four hundred and something odd dollars per machine. This last go around that we, we seized, uh, were like a hundred and fifty, between seventy-five and a hundred and fifty dollars per machine, the value has gone down because there's so many out there.
Now, that, on this permit fee, is there an additional fee per machine?
Uh, if you look at the chart, so the two thousand dollars annual fee doesn't exist, and then it goes to the number of machines, so the first, uh, level is one to three, is a thousand dollars to hand between one to three.
Eight four.
It's four to four, I'm sorry, uh, then four to ten, if you go through, now, the one, that's the upper, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
So they're grouped, like, one to three?
It goes, it goes all the way down, and then when you get over eighty, then it's ten, for every ten, it's additional five thousand, two hundred dollars for every ten, for everyone who has ninety machines, you add on, it would be forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Now, with this ordinance, would it be to just, what, what, what's the, the final outcome? What are we trying to accomplish, just to eliminate them completely, or to kind of, uh, you know, keep them from, from, just to regulate the, the...
Right, the, the objective to, to this ordinance is, is to, uh, you know, regulate these eight liners and, and keep, you know, our, our laws in effect, of course, and then, of course, them being in compliance with this, this ordinance helps us out a lot, you know, because if we don't have an ordinance, and we come in there and say, hey, you can't have alcohol, this is stopment, of course, we can't enforce anything unless we have an ordinance to, to help with.
So we can't stop them from coming in, we just can, uh, control them?
Exactly, right, right, right now, it is currently, but with this ordinance, of course, that'll give us leverage and say, hey, you know what, you're not in compliance, you know, that'll, you know, if they don't take care of the problem or the issue, of course, the, the establishment will be in violation of the ordinance.
Um, I, I just have a question, you know, I'm a gambling myself, but, I go to the Vegas, but let's not forget that Texas has a law about gambling, doesn't it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so legislators are out there spending hours and hours doing this, and then we're trying to be in, within the law to, to block liners, uh, because this whole thing of gambling thing, thing is, if the owner is making money, of course, he's going to go in there and get a permit to make money, but that's illegal, so, and that's my question. If it's illegal, why would we want to pass an ordinance to make money?
Again, the only time it makes it illegal is when you pay out cash, cash money. The way, my understanding, the way they're doing it currently is, uh, through coupons and certificates, or, I'm sorry, the gift cards.
But still, the owner's still making money, he's not supposed to be making the money, so that's illegal. Brad, whether he's paying with coupons, or paying with leaves, or whatever, he's still making money, he's making a profit, and it's illegal.
Well, it can't, it's not illegal if, if anybody can come and do it.
Well, the Texans don't gamble, that's what it is, so why would you want to get caught in cash twenty-two, that's my question, cash twenty-three?
Can I move your hand to that?
I want you to start off the, start off your hook comment by saying statutory.
Well, if you look at our definition, it's on page two, we say at paragraph G, "Excluded machines as herein used, convenient and included machines that award the user a non-cash merchandise prize, toy, or novelty solely and directly from the machine, including the claw, and you know what the claw machines are, they come in H U V now, crane or similar machines, and machines from which opportunity to receive a non-cash merchandise prize, toy, or novelty or representation as reasonable of value redeemable, provided by them, varies depending upon the user's ability, including but not limited to miniature racetrack machines, miniature football machines, miniature golf, golf machines, and miniature molding machines." Now, Revlon is defined a gambling device, and this is sort of a reverse definition, but it's designed to get out of what the gentleman's concerned about, which is that item that is defined as being an illegal device or a gambling device. So we define this as any electronic or electromechanical or mechanical contrivance not excluded under H U V above. So we're defining what is and what is not within the code. To answer your question, it's a long explanation, but we're trying to follow the statute.
Is that included by buddy machines, and you want buddy bucks at H U V?
Buddy bucks at H U V have been operating for a long time, but outside the code, and so has the old machine that runs.
So they can't use the buddy bucks anymore?
No, they, they can do buddy bucks.
So anything that has to do with any type of redemption, say, tokens or, or stepped down, was that, that's going to be included or excluded?
Included, it's okay.
Oh, it's okay?
Yeah, that's excluded from the, uh, from this ordinance, this ordinance, because it's okay to do it.
Uh, let me, let me express, you all got a, a kind of summary sheet, or I'd like an email?
There's one in our packet, it's in our packet, uh, the page, the first page.
And I have two concerns about the ordinance, if we're going to go forward on it. One is, is we presently have it, and I'm not sure why we have it, so I'm not going to comment on it, but we presently have a proposal for ten locations in Floresville, and it's my view, my recommendation, that we not have a numerical cap. Uh, we don't have ten towing stations, we don't have ten restaurants, uh, I don't see why we should have ten eight liner locations. The council wants to do that, it's prerogative to do so, but I don't see any reason for having to take records on the first ten and then keeping track of those that are left thereafter. So my recommendation, that, my recommendation is that it's section two, if it's your choice to adopt this, that you exclude the limitation of ten. Okay? So it's not a, it's not a Baskin Robbins thing where the first ten, get it, and then we're having to worry about losing lines next. The other concern I have is with the no alcohol, maybe sold from locations with the eight liners. I think it's important that we all agree on how we're going to define the use of the term alcohol. Uh, I know there's been some interest about this being an opportunity for vopers, uh, so we have to be clear whether we intend to include vopers for alcohol consumed on premises, or, I don't think they'd ever do it in blues, but they might do it in blues, or wherever else alcohol can be an open beverage. We need to say clearly, it's either excludes or includes open beverages. I think the way it's presently drafted, it's intended to be something for convenience for, with alcohol, not used on premises, uh, but alcohol can be taken and purchased there and taken off premises.
The way I read it is that it's, anyone basically with a liquor license.
Right, exactly.
But you can have a liquor license, but not, and, or, uh, what is it, a wine or beverage, something a little bit less of a liquor license, or you can still have something like this? And, and you could have eight liners with, uh, just, what is it, a wine or beverage or something, I think that's what it's called, and then, and then be excluded once it, it goes up to a higher tier of liquor license, correct?
Right, that's correct, and I'm not sure there's any good reason for that distinction. Okay, I mean, we're not doing anything with an eight liner that's going to make you more or less compliant with, with the law. It's stuck in the machine and forbidden. I mean, that's just my own opinion, okay, do, do what you want with the issue of alcohol, okay? Uh, it's the same question that you asked the chief earlier about churches, uh, schools, or whatever, if you feel like you want to distance market or spread it, you can do so, but if, as we sit here tonight, if we enacted it, we'd have a couple of people that already would be in violation, so...
Yes, um, I, I have, I'm not familiar with the rules and regulations in this, but who can be an owner? What are the qualifications?
They're none.
Oh, okay, that, that's a problem. I, I just feel like, I, I'd have to hire a home care eight, and I have to do a criminal background check on that person. Are you telling me that there's nothing like that for the owner of one of these things?
Not as it's personally realized, I'm actually be straight up.
You what? That's not, I just have a big problem with, with some of these... I just have a big problem with, with something like that.
Let me, let me explain it to you this way. When I was a kid, and I lived out of state, and I came to town, and my uncle had pinball machines, I was fascinated with pinball machines. And pinball machines used to be very legal and very regular, and I went home with all his used parts and put together my own little mini machines in the garage. Okay, because they had a battery powered device, a little thing that went back and forward, and it made the thing go deep. And I didn't have a background check.
You are inviting, uh, knowledge?
Let me, let me just make my point. My point was, is I didn't think there was anything wrong at the time, and I still don't think there's anything wrong right now with owning a pinball machine, but it's illegal. Okay? I don't know that there's anything wrong or right with running an eight liner, you're watching this machine steal your money.
But I don't think we're inviting it, Steve, and I think at this point, anybody can come in here and open the business, I mean, whether we invite them or not, I mean, they, there's an open building, they can open the business. All we're trying to do is if they do open the business, maybe make it a little bit tougher, because now there's, it's going to cost you to, A, for a permit, and then, you know, cost you for so many machines. So maybe, actually, this is actually limit people from coming in here, because, well, maybe it's too expensive to go open a business in Florida. But if we don't set this, or we don't put this in place, like you said, anybody, you know, anybody from in here can go in there and open an eight liner business, and there's no background check, it's like any other business.
And you can put a background check.
Yeah, or we could, you know, add that on there, but at this point, we're not inviting it, we're, I mean, we're regulating if it does come.
So we're going to go back to these places and, and target them?
Yes, they will, they will, they will have a hundred percent of letter stating that they have 30 days to comply. So they have to come in and pull their permit, pay their fees, for however many machines they currently have.
Mr. Guerrero, the, the truth of the matter is, all our competing cities are making revenue from these machines. The real truth about it tonight is, do you want a revenue device called an eight liner, or not?
Well, that was my question earlier, if, if we can't control them coming, at least we can control, you know...